We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions or comments?
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
McGarretty.
Here.
Rick. Yours.
Move to excuse Commissioner Short and Yeller.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGarretty.
Yes.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. I see nothing listed on the agenda. Is there anyone with anything? Okay, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
No.
Support.
Yeah, when it comes up.
We have to amend it for...
No, the motion's just definite.
Motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Anyone?
Support.
Okay. Questions or comments about the agenda? Call the roll please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGarretty.
Yes.
Okay, moving to public participation. This is the portion of the meeting where we invite the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you come to the microphone, you give us your full name, residential address, you address your comments to the chair. And yes, we ask that you, if you have any questions or if you have any comments, please come to the microphone. Hi.
Hi, my name is Sarah Herter. This is Ryan Herter. We live at 630 Crest Street. We've been residents of the city for 25 years. We're here to address the driveway issue that I emailed everybody about. I did receive response from Mr. Calhoun, but no follow-up, so we're trying to follow up on that. This was the issue that I attached the pictures of our driveway fix that was then fixed with asphalt that we were told that would not be fixed because of a a permit that wasn't pulled probably before we were born on our house. So, we're here to try to get that fixed because we spend a lot of money on our home. We try to make it beautiful. We love our city. We're really disappointed that something that wasn't that bad was made into a terrible disaster. That's pretty much a handicap disaster now. This is our new driveway that is starting to fall apart. You know, crumble in my driveway, so we're just super frustrated, trying to do everything the right way. But now we're here to, you know, be responsible to pay for this fix that is causing another really expensive fix for our house that was not that bad to begin with. We did not own the house when this driveway was originally done, and we were not the ones that pulled the permit. We we pull permits, we follow rules, we try to do our very best, and now we're stuck with a very large bill that caused a very big problem that is causing us to have to fix the approach to our house, which is just really upsetting to us because we try to do our very best and make our house beautiful, and we've been dealing with this problem. Now we have a driveway that's falling apart, a big bill that's due coming up in September, and then another, you know, expense to have to fix my approach. So we're just asking to have the city work with us. I've been disappointed with the lack of responses on trying to work with us instead of just hiding behind the fact that there was no permit pulled, like I said, before we were probably born. And we try to do our best, and if anyone wants these pictures that I emailed out to everybody of the before, during, and after, I'd love to share it again, or if you did not originally receive my email that I sent twice with no response, we just were hoping to reach out again and, like I said, get this fixed, hopefully come to some sort of agreement. Because we're pretty upstanding citizens of the community and have had businesses in the city, love our home, have had two houses, follow rules, make things beautiful. This is just really disappointing to us, and it's a really big expense that is set forward.
Yeah, we just want it right, so.
We just want it fixed, so. So, we're trying to do everything right and
Get it fixed.
have communication, so if like everybody does, just maybe assess it again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Norm Lupow. 4066 Orford, London Township. My eyes are not cooperating tonight, and my hearing is worse, so I've condensed this, and I will give some copies to our good city clerk. You can read later. Let me just say this. Now my voice is going. I think you are already aware of my request. Those that are not aware of it, I'll say it again. My request is to meet each commissioner for an informal, in-person, citizens, 30 minutes plus or minus, listening and learning conversation that hopefully could lead to a win-win for the city and for all those that are handicapped with disabilities, who has or will at certain times and days encounter at the designated handicap parking locations in downtown, which requires handicapped people to pay now with coins. I'm just going to read the last paragraph. In my long career and decades of experience, having listening and learning meetings with local, counties, state legislators, and federal elected officials, please know the many over the years were meaningful and productive. In closing, I believe progress only happens when good people care to come together to share ideas, suggestions, and that believe improvements are always possible thinking of the greater good for all, as we said in the Pledge of Allegiance, with liberty and justice for all, not some. Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I have permission to?
Yes, absolutely. Here, Mr. Lupow.
We'll come get it.
Yeah, here, yep.
Mr. Norman.
Spencer's.
Oh, he can't hear you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Good afternoon, this is General McCann, 550 Clinton River Drive. I'm at Barbara and Shady Side Park at that intersection there. We need a stop sign there. If anybody is aware of that, we need a stop sign. It's an accident waiting to happen. I actually plead that you kind of look into that and...
It's there. I drove by. It was up.
We got a yield, right? Or yield?
Yeah, he said that it should be a yield.
It's a yield there. I think it'd be better if we get a stop sign there.
Okay, I'll have to, because it was the DPW director that handles all of our street signs. I had him look at it the next day, and he he said it should be a yield sign, so I'll have to look at it again, but I got you. I did take care of you.
Thank you, all right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Hi there. Oh damn, she's still alive. Yep, still alive, kids. Now, number one. October 21st.
I'm sorry, can you please state your...
Gloria Hallard, 260 Cass Mount Clemens since 1845. My family, okay? Got it? All right. October 21st of 2024, I asked a question. What is the date of the last master plan? In my experience in life, and I've had a lot of it in 84 and a half years, the farther one gets from the question, the more words they use, the less likely you want to believe it. That question was answered, well, in a date, a date. 90-plus words later, I can't believe it anyway. You know why? Because they refer to the fact that September 16th, 2016, there was a vote, that's not a Monday, that's a Friday. When did the city commissions meet on Fridays? So, if that little tidbit of fact is wrong, probably the rest of it's garbage too, and I kind of wonder sometimes who writes Mr. Shipman's answers because not sure it's him. That being said, the reason I wanted to come to tonight's meeting even though I feel like roadkill, this is the last meeting in the 11th year following a temporary tax increase foisted on us by the city commission and that sleaze bag of a city manager you had at the time that taught you, oh, run it on the August, the primary, because nobody votes and we can run any of them. Yeah, well, there were two things said at that time. That millage increase of a third from 15 to 20 mils was going to be temporary. Next month begins the 12th year. What do you call temporary? You forgot? You're so busy spending money, you can't remember the promises you made? Shame on you. I know you didn't do it, but I kind of have a reasonable expectation that people on the city commission have some idea what went on before they got here. And I think most people a 25% increase in property taxes, which would be when you took it back from 20 to 15. And if you're worried about our finances, remember when you took away our sovereignty with water because you didn't want us to be burdened with cost and future. Well, if you're that worried about our finances, why aren't you worried about our taxes that were without representation, actually? So, kind of get your story together, your poop in a group before you say it.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? Okay, hearing done, we will go ahead and move on to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during the previous meeting. Mr. Shipman.
One second, it's a little slow. No, my hat is just a little slow coming up, like me. At the July 7, 2025 commission meeting during public comment, the following questions were asked. A resident wanted to know when a tree located in a median near 450 Clinton River Drive was going to be trimmed. The Public Works Department has recently completed trimming of this tree. Second question, a resident on Lindsay was complaining about a tree in the right-of-way that he has requested the city cut down. He said that he was given paperwork to request a permit to have the tree cut down at his cost, and he stated, why should he pay for it when he pays taxes for these services? Public Works staff have evaluated this tree and found it to be healthy. Healthy trees in the right-of-way are not removed by the city. However, if a resident would like to apply for a permit and hire a contractor at their own expense to remove a tree, they may do so. Third question, a resident of Lafayette Street asked, when will the combined sewers on Lafayette be separated? The city has directed the city engineer to look at separating the sewers throughout the entire city and provide associated costs to accomplish this in a phased approach. Another resident on Lafayette asked, what is the solution to this basement flooding? The city engineers recommended restricted covers be placed on storm sewers on Lafayette Street. The covers were installed approximately one year ago. And that's all again?
Thank you. I'm sorry, my agenda keeps loading the wrong agenda. So, we'll go ahead and move on to approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Does anybody have any questions about the minutes? Okay, hearing done. Call the roll please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGarretty.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Okay, moving to general business 9A, introduction and first reading of amendments to section 12.201, section 1 of the election precincts boundaries ordinance.
I move that we table this, a table, the introduction.
I don't think you do.
Oh, it's the third one? Can I do this one too?
No.
If you want to table everything, you know, we can mention a cut.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Saving you from yourself. Okay, let's try again.
Start again.
I'll entertain a motion for A.
Can't move it. It's my present.
I move to approve the introduction and first reading of an amendment to section 12.201, section 1 of the election precincts boundaries ordinance and set August 4th, 2025 as a date for the second reading and adoption.
Support.
Quick question.
Okay. Mr. Shipman.
At the city commission meeting of July 7, 2025, the city commission approved the renumbering of precinct 9 to precinct 5. In addition, the Mount Clemens Election Commission approved the renumbering of precinct 9 to precinct 5 by resolution April 11, 2025. As a result, city ordinance 12.201, section 1, election precincts boundaries must be amended to eliminate the boundaries of precinct 9 and assign those boundaries to precinct 5 within the ordinance. This ordinance amendment has been reviewed by the city attorney.
Barb, do you have any questions?
Why are you more than 5%?
Promise we're not moving it.
Just to say that I'm loud, I guess.
Yeah.
Put the precincts down anyway.
Yeah.
It's just 30 number.
Right. Absolutely, yeah. All right, does anybody have any other questions or comments? All right, hearing done. Call the roll please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGarretty.
Yes.
Calhoun. Dempsey.
Uh, yes.
All right, motion passes, and we'll move on to 9B, approval of permanent relocation of voting precinct 1. Entertained motion?
I move to approve the permanent relocation of precinct 1 from Turner Chapel Church at 125 Clinton River Drive to Greater Morning Star Church at 87 Robertson effective immediately.
Mr. Ship... I'd like to support.
Second.
Need a second.
We need a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, now, Mr. Shipman, go ahead.
Precinct 1 has been located at Turner Chapel Church, 125 Clinton River Drive since 2013, and has served our voters well over the years. However, due to recent building problems, it was deemed necessary to permanently relocate the precinct. The officials of Greater Morning Star Church at 87 Robertson have graciously agreed to allow the city to use their building as the new location for precinct 1. Greater Morning Star Church is a highly desirable substitute due to its close proximity to Turner Chapel Church within the same neighborhood. The Mount Clemens Election Commission approved the permanent relocation of precinct 1 to Greater Morning Star Church by resolution at its meeting of July 11, 2025. All voters affected by the precinct relocation will be notified by first-class mail. Notices will also be posted on the city's website and social media pages, the McComb Daily Newspaper, and at the entrance of Turner Chapel Church on Election Day to direct voters to go to Greater Morning Star Church to vote.
Okay, who has questions or comments?
I have questions. My question is, Greater Morning Star Church has a ramp that leads to the auditorium that would not make the precinct handicapped accessible. So, I don't want, you know, at the last minute, the voters on that side of town to have to go somewhere else at the last minute. Did they consider that in part of the discussion?
Yes, good question. There is a handicap ramp on the side of Greater Morning Star, and when you open the door, it takes you through the sanctuary. We're going to have the precinct located in the storage room that's off to the right, so we are, I'm going to buy a like a small ramp to go in the door opening so that handicapped wheelchairs and whatnot can get through.
Okay, well, and it'll be for the wide chairs as well, correct?
I guess so. I didn't know there was...
Yeah.
I mean, it should be to ADA standards.
Carl, can you address that?
So, it'll be on the playground side? I'm not sure what the actual specifications are for how wide it is, but it should be sufficient to make sure that we don't fall
As well as the restroom as well, it's all on the same for a handicap? Okay, I just don't want what happened last minute and voters were scrambling, but I know that that ramp led to the auditorium, so that's good. So, we're providing to make it accessible.
Right.
Okay, good. Good, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll please.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGarretty.
Yes.
Rick. I'm sorry. Rick isn't here. Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, moving to item 9C.
I move that we table the resolution establishing the parking permit fees and parking violation fines pursuant to ordinance 2200 and criteria for establishment of the residential permanent parking zone for till the next meeting.
Support.
Questions or comments about tabling item 9C? Call the roll please.
McGarretty.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes. Moving to 9D, purchases and payments.
There's no purchases and payments.
Why, I'm, my, my...
It's been one of those meetings.
I'm sorry, my iPad keeps taking me back to July 7. I don't know why. Sorry about that. Okay, we'll move to 10 then, consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Support. Support. Okay, call the roll please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGarretty.
Yes.
Okay, moving to city manager's report. Mr. Shipman.
The city has received plans for a new single-family home at 9 Queen Street. This is the sixth new single-family home that has been permitted this year. Despite the rain events, the road construction projects are progressing on schedule. As we work towards fixing the streets in the city, we'd like to thank everyone for their patience during these projects, and we look forward to the end results. Does your team need service hours? We have spots available in our summer day camp for teens that want to volunteer. Contact the Recreation Director for more information at 586-469-6800. As of July 1, 2025, the city's 457B plan will now offer a new Roth option to our employees. The 457B Roth contribution gives employees another tax advantage savings option, allowing them to benefit from tax-free withdrawals at retirement. Congratulations to recent retirees, John Jones from the wastewater treatment plant. He was an operator there for over 20 years. Thomas Stuckey, who was also a water plant operator for 20 years, and Scott Bacon, who was also a water plant operator for over 30 years. Thank you for your many years of service to the city of Mount Clemens. And with that, of course, we want to welcome our new team members, Sarah Marshall, water plant operator, Benjamin Larson, water plant operator, Anthony Arnold, dialer ride driver, and Jason McCormick, maintenance worker. Tomorrow is the last day to turn in paperwork to the city clerk's office by 4:00 PM to run for the offices of Mount Clemens Mayor and Mount Clemens City Commission. Candidates will appear in the November 4, 2025, general election ballot for one two-year term seat for mayor and three four-year terms for city commissioner. To qualify, candidates must be at least 18 years of age, a registered voter, and a resident of Mount Clemens for at least 365 days. All residents should have received their 2025 summer tax bill, which is due by September 15. If you are age 62 and over or are permanently disabled and your home income for the preceding calendar year did not exceed $40,000, you are eligible to apply for a deferment in the treasurer's office. This form must be completed and signed each year between July 1 and September 15, and will defer any penalty on your summer tax until February 28, 2026.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Shipman?
Not yet, because we haven't talked about our community events yet.
Oh, gosh, well, you had it long enough to say. Continue. Yeah.
Mickey, this is Mickey's area, Mickey. Community events, uptown Friday night concerts, Friday, July 25 from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, featuring Strictly Fine, Funk and Soul Party Man, that'll be on the main stage on North Walnut Street. Main stage will be moved to McComb Place across from O'Hallorans' Pub for the next six concerts after that one. So, the next one will be Uptown Friday Night Concert, Friday, August 1, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Dave Hamilton, which is rock, funk, and pop. Again, that main stage will be on McComb Place across from O'Hallorans'. Free movie Under the Stars, Park It Family Fun Night, live music, kids' activities, and giveaways. Wednesday, August 6, at 6:00 PM, on McComb Place across from O'Hallorans'. Live music at 6:30 PM, Mom, Furt, and Son. Movie Mona 2 at 8:15 PM. Remember to bring your lawn chairs. And an Uptown Friday Night Concert, Friday, August 8, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, the Funk Fish, classic rock and grooves. That'll be the main stage on McComb Place across from O'Hallorans'. Information on any of our events, call 586-469 or 168.
Okay, now, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Shipman? All right, hearing done, we will move to Commissioner comments, and we will start with Commissioner McGarretty. Oh, we're, sorry. Man, I'm not having...
This is levels on every agenda, hold on.
I know. Okay, this is the second opportunity that we invite the public to address the commission. We ask that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule.
Shelby Holderbaum, 53 Lafayette. So, the response to us expressing our frustrations last week is that there's going to be an analysis done with hopefully some form of a phased approach in remediating this issue, if I understand correctly. However, you were told, or I was told by you, Greg, over, it was fall of last year, that that same analysis was going to take place and had, and the solution was the restricted covers. So, I want to make sure that we're aware of, you know, what kind of analysis is being done, because you had said that was done already, and it was not a possibility to separate the systems because of the lack of access to an exit, so to speak. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not blanketing this by saying we're going to do an analysis that was already done, so can we have some transparency and some elaboration on what was done previously and what was found in that analysis? And what exactly is being done in this upcoming analysis that you guys are doing?
Well, we don't normally answer these at this meeting, but I will answer just to get the truth out there. So, we, when I said an analysis was being done, it wasn't citywide. It was one particular location, and that analysis revealed that we would try restrictive cover plates. And since we've installed those, other than the 4.2 inches of rain we received the other day, I have not got one complaint of flooding in those areas.
But I told you immediately that after those were...
I actually called you, and we had a discussion after a couple rains that we had, and I asked you, and you said... I actually called you and we had a discussion after a couple rains that we had, and I asked you and you said no. But you said you felt like it was a Band-Aid, and I said, well, according to the engineers, this is not a Band-Aid. This is a legitimate permanent fix if it works.
And to that I responded with, my neighbor had water in her basement.
You said you heard your neighbor did, but nobody ever called and told me they did. I have to be able to verify things. Because if that, if these aren't working, then we look at the next step, which is we look further down the line and then we can add more restrictive cover plates. The problem, like you said, is when we have these areas and we separate them, there has to be a place to take the water to. There isn't a place there to take the water to. And that's what we're running into. So that's why we 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 trying this restrictive plate route. So that's not the only area in the city that has sewers that aren't separated. So what I said is instead of looking at two or three houses here and two or three houses there, let's look at the entire city and let's come up with a plan where we can somehow possibly think about phasing this in, and let's take the the worst areas first. And so that's what they're doing, which is a big undertaking that they're going through right now, and it's gonna it's gonna cost us money, but I've asked them to do it. I think we talked about the last meeting. We have two hundred million dollars worth of repairs that, you know, we want to do on our water and sewer. But we'll have a plan, we'll know what the costs are, and the commission can decide what they want to do at that point.
So I I think it's just important to be clear that that's already been done for Lafayette. So your response to us bringing our complaint is that there's gonna be analysis on citywide. That's great for the city, but the analysis has been done for Lafayette? So what additional steps are being taken for our street specifically?
There's a remote possibility, and this is so for me to throw this out there, then everybody wants to take it verbatim. Okay, but I'll do it. There's a remote possibility that there could poss- possibly be a detention pond put in Dorothea Park. Now, that's a, that's a reach, right? Otherwise, you've got to find a way to separate, which means put in, tear up the street, put in a whole nother main, and get it to somewhere where it can go to the river. Right, we don't, and so when they did the separation project back in the eighties, you know, that was the same challenge they had that, that's extremely expensive and it's hard to do. Because you're talking about a long ways from some areas to get to, you know, a river. So there's a possibility of a detention pond possibly in Dorothea Park or possibly over at our water tower site. But there's a lot of challenges with that as well. So with that, you're talking about something that would have to go into engineering probably for six months to a year. So what we're looking at is a bigger picture. Right, a bigger picture where maybe we're running a brand-new main through these areas. That's gonna cost millions and millions of dollars that at some point we could separate and put this water into. So I know when people are frustrated, when your your basements are flooding, because we've had storms in the last three or four years that are unfounded. We don't get two inches of rain in eight hours. We get two inches of rain in thirty minutes, forty minutes, sixty minutes. You're not alone. Every community around us is having the same problem. Everybody's got sewers that aren't separated. And we're all facing the same challenges. It's not that we don't care, but it's not easy. And I know that that's not gonna be enough, because that's not what you want to hear, but we haven't just written it off. And like I said, I haven't got any reports. Four point two inches of rain, I can't, nobody can fix that. But if this isn't working, then something we could do immediately is go further up that line and put these restricted cover plates in, but people have to tell us when their basement. I don't know when somebody's basement floods unless they tell me. Every time we get a complaint, we track it now. And we can, we can find out where problem areas are located, because without that, we don't know.
I think that your residents also think that you don't care. So after years and years, decades and decades of flooding, people aren't even gonna waste their time reaching out to you guys, because nothing has been done in the past.
And that's a possibility, you know, and and when you called, I immediately tried, right, I put the engineers on it. They went, yeah, there's nowhere to take it. Let's try this. Just doesn't work, then we'll try something else, you know? And then we're looking at a far-reaching situation with these detention pods, but again, it's not, it's not something we can do overnight. And then what I don't want to do is spend millions. And and we're only making an impact on a few places. If we're gonna spend millions, let's impact as great an area as possible, and let's let's spread these dollars as far as we can.
The last question is, where can I find meeting minutes? Meeting minutes are on the um, website. They're not, they're not posted. I mean, that's what. For them to be posted typically, because I noticed that they weren't there after checking a couple days ago.
After they're approved, like, then they're 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 posted.
So like last, that we just approved last meeting's minutes today, so that we post it after today.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Kamalski, fifty-two Lafayette. And I can give you a name of someone who did call you on July ninth, and that's Sue Frazier. So to say that you haven't heard, she said, woke up with sewer water in my basement. I said, call the uh, mayor's office. She did, someone came out, so it's really not fair to say that no one has called. We do call when something happens. And it's just, um, you say you're concerned and you you haven't uh, let this go, and you're gonna help the whole city, which that's lovely. But I don't think they get it as bad as we do. And people do, uh, what happened to her? Is she not counted?
Ma'am, I didn't get it, so.
Where is it?
It could have went in.
Well, someone from the city came out.
Sewer, I don't know.
Someone from the city came out and chucked, and after she had had her own plumber come and and clear the lines, and then they go, oh, it's okay. You know, it it's a clear, yeah, well, I just paid to have it done. It's very frustrating, and so keep track of people who do call, because we're real, real people going through this. It's very difficult. So, yeah, and again, we'd like to know when, you know, well, there'll be some concrete resolution or help for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else would like to address the commission?
Say name again, Gloria Hall or two sixty Cass. Another thing the residents haven't forgotten about money, since you're slinging it about so happily on things like the Cherry Street Mall and all this stuff and feel-good stuff that I always refer to as municipal masturbation, because it feels good and it's fun, but it's not productive. So besides that millage that you just kind of are conveniently forgetting to return, I saw that article in the journal and about fell over. Honest to God, you're going to be taken back twenty South Main. What did I tell the city commission? When they first Oakland University was coming to town and Steve Saft condemned and believing we're what could it be, a college town? Really? Where are the dormitories? But see, he had to con dem into believing that because there was some money coming, and in the end, what the residents have not forgotten is one point six million dollars meant for distressed neighborhoods. Went to fix up a building that belonged to a man uh, who never fixes his own buildings with his own money. And for a well-endowed university, that doesn't sound very distressed to me. Huh, how you gonna legitimize that one? Oh, I guess you swallow hard when you take it back, huh? Shame on you. Wasn't you, I hold you responsible for knowing about it before you got up here.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? All right, hearing done, I will, we will go ahead and move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner McGarrett.
For the, thank you. For the residents on Lafayette Street, the meeting that you had, I I found out on Facebook. I personally apologize for not being in that meeting, and when I found out, I was already scheduled for something I could not change. I'm I'm concerned with what's happening. Like I stated when you first came, I've experienced flooding. I've experienced flooding in my basement, and it is expensive. Uh, the the last meeting we had, there was a a resident who's on a fixed income. I can't imagine the cost. McComb Community Action Center does offer free plumbing, um, income-based, but it's at two hundred percent um, for contractors to come out to the house. But in all honesty, if we already know what the problem is, it's just gonna kind of patch it for a little while. So if you know your residents on Lafayette Street, have them to call and ask for plumbing assistance. The number is five eight six four six nine six nine six four. Monday through Friday from nine to four. So not only will you get the plumbing taken care of, it'll bring the water bill down for you as well. The highest it it can pay is three thousand dollars. If your water bill is a little more than that, and it is, we have people who call who are, you have to co-pay the difference. But you need a plumber to your house. Call and ask what are the qualifications for it to get to get that fixed, okay? McComb.
No, she's, we were thinking about the residents in High Street.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that's why I noticed her face. Okay, yeah. But um, I noticed you wrote that down, just watch the tape, so you can get that number in case you lose it, because this is recorded, okay? And but share it. You never know, that's what, that's what, to me, that's what it's all about. We're helping our residents here in Mount Clemens. It might not be you, but it's someone that you know on your street that needs that help, and they don't know it's there. So please share that information and ask what else do we offer? Utility bills or what have you, and if we, if it's something that you need help with, we'll guide you to get that help. We want Mount Clemens to not, I looked um, about a week ago, our numbers have dropped uh, with residents, and I don't want to see the people in Lafayette look for another place to live because of that challenge, like what happened in Chesterfield. They realized where they were living and they moved. We don't have the money to fix everything right away. But as stated, you know, things do take time, as long as you bring them to the public. Bring them to the public like you, like you did today, so that stuff can start happening. People can't fix what what they don't know, or at least to try to work on it. So my heart, that 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 bothered me. My heart i- i- it is low for you for that, but I do hope there is some type of resolution or some money that will come so we can get that fixed. It was odd you said that, because I started writing down things a few days before. Who picks the streets that are fixed in in Mount Clemens? I don't know that. Who picks the streets that are fixed in Mount Clemens? I don't know if we answered it now, or do I gotta come back? Okay.
So there's a lot of variables that go into what streets get, obviously, we use the Pazer scores. That's the first thing we look at.
Okay.
And the next thing we look at is, are there water and sewer repairs that need to be done underneath the street?
Okay.
So there might be a street that's in a little worse shape than another, but if it needs water and sewer repairs, and there's not enough money in the water and sewer fund to do it, then we will probably repair the street that doesn't have water and sewer repairs to go along with it.
Okay.
So every year, when it, when we go into budget time, we take a look at everything again, and then we budget what streets we can do based on those factors.
Thank you for answering that. Um, if we, this is just with facts, if we wanted to close a street, I know you have to go and get the permission of the residents on that street. What if the street area you want closed, there is no, um, there's no, it's just land? You just turn it in and the city checks that to make sure?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Do you want to close the street?
Like if I wanted to close.
Like a block party?
Yeah, like if I just wanted to close off a certain street.
Gotcha, yeah, you can go through Brian's office for block party permits.
Okay.
Community development.
Thanks for sharing this publicly. Okay, and we talked about the Shady Side restroom. Thank you for giving the amount. Where are we with that?
So any recommendations for Parks and Rec is being turned over to the Parks and Rec Board. And then they will look at that, and then they'll decide if it's feasible. And then they can make that recommendation back to the commission, and that budget time, if the commission so chooses, they can make that part of that year's annual budget.
Okay, is that, do you know if that was sent to the board yet, or?
That was our board at the time, Carl, but I believe we're, we have a full board now, so.
Awesome. He said they they have two new members, so he'll start in August. That's good, that's good. I know he, I don't know if that picks up back there, but, um, okay, that's good to know. Um, I did want to, oh, last question, dial ride hours. Are we extending them because they're cut off like one or two o'clock in the afternoon? Are we going back to how it used to be four, at least four?
Um, I believe dial ride is till, I think the last ride is quarter to three, ten to three, Chef's not here. So.
Last call to pick up is.
I I believe so. Don't, don't quote me. It's a quarter to three, ten to three, right in that area, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to share also to the public. Um, school will be coming in soon, August sixteenth at Shady Side Park. The sevens committee will have been approved to do the annual backpack giveaway that they do for the children. Um, they've been emphasized not to have the people to park on the um, sidewalk path, because I know that's been a concern at Shady Side from the residents, and they said they will emphasize that. So, um, and not only do they do that, but they get up that morning at six and they clean the park, knowing that we have staff that can do it. So I want everyone to come out. You do not have to be a Mount Clemens resident. On August sixteenth, head over to Shady Side Park. There's vendors, food, um, music. They play a basketball tournament, but but most importantly, your children get free school supply. So I just wanted to share that. Everyone have a good uh, next two weeks.
Thank you. Mr. Fournier.
One of the most frustrating things about being on this commission is we listen to all the things that we want to get done, and there's so dang many of them and so much, and we're, but we're limited to our budget, right? I mean, we have to spend what we have, like any household. I mean, we are restricted in what we can spend in terms of the money coming in. Hence fifteen to twenty mils. Nobody hates it more than I do. I'll show you my tax bill. But at the same time, we have two hundred million dollars of water repairs that we have to do. So then our life becomes dependent on grants. We have to find a grant for this and a grant for that, because without it, doing anything, any major projects is, it's a nightmare. It's a nightmare for our budget. I um, and so we struggle, and every one of us cares about it. It, it's just finding a way to do it. And after that last meeting on Lafayette, I mean, I know I'm committed to finding a way that La- for Lafayette to get their sewer separated. Um, but then again, I'm sure there's other people that I haven't heard from that are gonna have the same request, because I remember there was one other one, and I felt terrible when they came in here. We finally got something done with them. So, everybody cares, we really do, and especially when you do bring your concerns, complaints, problems to the commission. We are all noting them, duly noting them. It's gonna take time to fix this. There's no question. I I, but I am, I do believe that Mr. Shipman will follow through and get us this study and see so we know exactly what we have to do, or we have choices to make as to what we can do. And we will get, do something. I, we have to. I I I just don't see that as as it's not an option to do nothing. It it just isn't, not when you're living like that. It's just not fair, it's not right, and there's nothing a homeowner can even do. So it it is a, a, a frustrating because nobody, we all want to just call up somebody and say, go fix that, you know, or but with all this water stuff, it has just been amazing how much this all costs and the time it takes and the, just everything involved with it. But I do know that Mr. But I do know that Mr. Shipman, and I know this commission, all do care, and he is trying the best he can with, um, the money we do have. And, you know, every so often, he pulls a rabbit out of the hat, and, um, we, we, we are able to get something done that is outside the budget. So I'm hoping in this case, as we, the engineers look into it, we can see what can be done. But we won't forget, we will, will not forget this, that we will, it was, it's on our list. And, um, we will bring it up and find, follow through somehow, some way. Um, I do wanna say, give a shout out to Mickey, because you know, these concerts are, they're a lot of work, and, um, but they sure are fun. At the Creedence Clearwater Revival, um, cover band last, um, Friday, which was, they were from, there were some people on the band from Mount Clemens, right? And, um, it was a lot of fun, it's my granddaughter's favorite group, and, uh, it, it, uh, but thank you for those, they are, and they had a great crowd. It was really a great crowd, so it was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Dempsey.
Not much more to say, I think. Um, enjoy the rest of your summer, you know, it's gonna be gone before you know it. This is already, you know, and near the end of July, so it's not much time left, um, to enjoy it, get out there and see the bands, uh, come downtown. Please support the businesses, they really need your help at this time, um, with all the construction going on, so we just wanna make sure we keep them here. And thank you also for, um, keeping the activities going down there. It's really, it's a challenge, so, thank you. I think that's all I'll say tonight.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Calhoun.
All right. Um, well, first, I wanna start by congratulating Ron, Thomas and Scott for the years of service to the city of Mount Clemens. Uh, two out of three worked for the city longer than I've been alive. What a career. Um, and, and then I wanna, um, uh, thank city manager for welcoming, uh, our new team members. I wanna congratulate Felicia and Rashard, uh, for the very well-deserved appointments to the Parks and Recreation Board. Um, I know Rashard personally, he's a great guy, and, um, uh, very excited to, to see what he'll accomplish there, and, uh, I don't know, I'm bad with names, I might know Felicia, but I don't know. Uh, but I, I'm sure she'll do a great job as well, um, as, as they look to solve, uh, some of the, uh, the challenges coming up with the parks and hopefully making our parks, uh, more beautiful. Um, I'm looking forward to the presentation by Nicklin Saft on basement flooding issues on July twenty-eighth at six P M, that'll be at the Carnes Community Center. Uh, this is something that the commission, and especially Commissioner Fournier, uh, requested to help familiarize the community with the city's liability, responsibilities, and tips on basement flooding prevention, as well as the types of homeowners insurance coverage that are available. I think it's important to note that with that, though, this is not the last time that we will discuss this. Uh, I was happy to hear that, uh, engineers will take a look at separating those sewers, uh, to hear a little bit more about, um, what that could look like. Uh, we've also talked about that recently, so excited for that. Uh, and I just wanna make it clear to the families on High Street, Lafayette, and everyone else who's been affected by basement flooding, that, uh, the city commission, we do hear you. Um, and everything that's been said is true, but, uh, we need to, uh, we're working to find a solution, this is priority for us, um, and it, it really matters. Um, and, you know, it's, it is extremely important to us, our hearts are, go out to you. I wish there was something we could do today, but, uh, in phases, hopefully we can, uh, start to work on some of this and, uh, and, and get some kind of solution. I also wanna speak about a few concerns that I have. Um, now, uh, I spent some time working on this, and I know that the words that we say and how we say them matter. I was very, tried to, tried to send of that, tried to send of that. Um, serving on the commission is, is a very difficult thing. It's extremely meaningful for us when we get a project done, it's been very meaningful for me, serving our neighbors and our community. Um, the city has accomplished quite a bit lately, and I'm very proud of that. Each of us has one vote here, and it's our responsibility to work with one another respectfully, share our best arguments, and make transparent, well-informed decisions. We're here to represent our community, we all know that. When residents bring us our, uh, their concerns, our job to make sure those get to the city manager, and the city manager, uh, takes those concerns, addresses them, or it leads to a policy change, as we've seen happen several times over the past few years, and of course before. There's a constant push and pull of balance, maintaining a balanced budget, making progress on strategic plan, and addressing the needs that, uh, people have despite costs that are rising around the country, here in our community, uh, and the revenue challenges that we have. If I didn't feel that I needed to speak about the way decisions are made here in public, I think I wouldn't. But, and I don't want this to overshadow all the good work that we've done here, but the obstacles that I and other members of this commission are facing while we're trying to properly represent our community are too big to ignore. Um, first, we all work hard to keep the community informed on what happens here, and to get feedback on what the city is doing. In my experience, when we've spoken up on behalf of our neighbors, sometimes, not every time, but sometimes, we've been met by some at this table with dismissiveness, disrespect, and argument. Now, I'm not gonna stop advocating for residents or sharing my truthful opinions, even though these things in the past have been met with angry and unprofessional phone calls. We all bring something unique to this table for the time that we're privileged to be here, and our city is stronger when all of our members receive the respect we deserve as we seek to represent our neighbors. Respectful disagreement is not division, but it's literally how we do things here, it's democracy. Now, with information to make good decisions, we have to have quality information, because it's the full present, uh, full picture, and that is presented equitably. When some of us ask for information from city administration, it's shared with all members, and I think that that's a good practice. But there are exceptions that exist in that practice for at least one member on the commission. When one person is aware of something that comes before us weeks or months before we're given a heads up, that makes it extremely difficult for us to research these issues, consult the community, or to make informed decisions. It's even harder to justify voting on something when I can't be confident that decision wasn't already made for me. Too often, six of us are the last to know on what's coming before us, something that may have already been worked on. But upholding, well, and I think, you know, we say a lot, you know, it's so great that we get along here on city commission, and we do get along really well. But, and it could be worse, but upholding the appearance of peace is not worth discounting the voices of residents. When it comes to transparency, I think we've done a great job with the work sessions that were created. It's been an extremely effective way to cover information that's coming before us. I believe that residents should be able to watch these meetings live, uh, on demand or on a public access station. I believe that, uh, our agendas should talk about some of the topics that are coming before us, so that people can show up to meetings, knowing that the topic they're interested in is going to be discussed in depth. Some people say, you know, we don't talk this freely when the cameras are on. Um, I get shy when the cameras are on, but I think if there's something that we can't discuss publicly, then we shouldn't be discussing it at all.
That's right.
Um, I think that the business that comes before this body belongs to the people we represent, and they deserve to know more about what's happening here. That kind of transparency will also help us as we continue to look back at what's happened to inform our future decisions. So I think there need to be changes in how information is shared from the city manager's office, and I think there's a serious conversation that needs to happen about the roles of the elected officials that sit at this table. No one member is exclusively entitled to more information than anyone else. And if something is coming to us, we should know about it, and we shouldn't be finding out about it from the newspaper or on Facebook. In the future, I'm also really interested in hearing more about our, uh, bidding process, possibly an ethics policy, commercial bite, and I believe that we need more transparency on, uh, the Oakland University Building, uh, and then future projects like the selling and redevelopment of this property, uh, the waterfront property and the water plant, which we talked about quite some time ago, but I haven't heard back about that. We don't have the luxury of letting good be the enemy of, uh, perfect. So, did I say that right? We don't have the luxury of letting perfect be the enemy of good here in Mount Clemens. But we do have the responsibility to make decisions that will impact our community now and the people who will be here decades down the line. So I think we have to be careful when we look at selling most of the city's assets. This has been a trademark of many cities that are in stages of decline. I think we need to face our future with action. I don't think we should let anything hold us back, but I do think that we should balance that with the concern for the future challenges we have. So I'm, I'm excited for the work that we'll continue to do, that I'll be able to do here the next two and a half years as a member of this commission, as a commissioner. And I'm looking forward to serving with the mayor and commission as we continue to work towards a future tool for our community. But I do think in terms of transparency, respect, and information, I've tried to have candid conversations about it, I don't think it's improved much, and the disrespect is just something that I cannot contend with. So those are my comments, I don't want that to overshadow the good things that happen in the city, but I can't do my job if this continues. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I will be having a coffee talk on August twelfth, um, at nine thirty A M at John's Family Grill. Um, and I too wanna thank the two new board members for the Parks and Recreation Board, um, who signed up. I'm excited to see that, um, board that I know will support Carl in his work as the new director, and looking forward to seeing that get moving. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support. Uh, any questions or comments about adjournment? All those in favor?
All right.
All right, any opposed? Thank you, everyone, have a great night.